I'm going to call the city council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts. Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Uh, Councillor Pitts is excused for the evening for a work conflict and I know we are still wa- expecting Councillor Pictionary any moment. Uh, we have one item tonight, which is the West D Street project update with Kristy Krueger. And we'll turn it over to you, Kristy.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, I would like to talk about the West D Street project and next steps. Um, back in two thousand seventeen, council discussed with staff the walking and biking funding, um, the STPU funding grant. And in that package was a list of projects and one being the West D Street, uh, project, which was to add striping and signing and look at traffic control on West D Street. So we have completed that batch of projects except for the West D Street project. And so we want to get moving on it and get something constructed, designed and constructed. So staff, you know, when, when we had that this project and we had staff resources to be able to move forward with design and construction, we wanted to go a little bit further and take a look at, are there any other quick possible things that we could do to improve the walking and biking out on West D Street? So we looked at some different concepts and, um, one of them being a cycle track, um, bike lanes on the roadway and whatnot. Um, and we spoke with the PAC, um, a couple of times, the Bike Head Advisory Committee. We also heard from folks that provided comments at council meetings as well as we heard from the folks that live adjacent to, um, West D Street, the ones that are affected directly by the project. And we quickly have found that to evaluate and to really do our due diligence on these type of other, um, projects, that we really need more time and resources to be able to do the public outreach that's necessary to do the proper analysis of the cycle track. Um, there are just some big safety issues that we're concerned about that we would really need to take more time in looking at before implementing something in that nature. Also, we have parking removal that we would need to discuss with council, um, to see if, you know, council is comfortable with removing parking. And that's a, you know, that's a whole process within itself. Um, so we really do want to get something implemented. Oh, yes?
Just give me one second. Um, AJ or Neil, can you send Councillor Pictionary the link? He's just texted me looking for it. It's the brilliance of being in a hybrid meeting setting. All right. Sorry to interrupt, Kristy.
No worries, no worries. So, um, with the resources that we have with staff time, we really need to get something implemented right now. And so, uh, what I would like to do is move forward with the design and construction of the capital project that has been approved in that walking and biking STPU funding package, um, which is the traffic calming of, um, speed cushions. And the number would be looked at during the actual design, plus the transition where the bike path comes into West D Street, adjusting that transition for better sight distance. And then also having a path, a ramp that comes off of West D Street further to the west. So if folks are, uh, in that, on actual West D Street with the sharrows, then they could get on and off West D Street on that, at that location. Um, and so then that, that would be the first piece. Then the second piece would for staff to come back to council to discuss work programs and funding opportunities to look at further options to separate bikes from other modes. And then the third piece is, uh, during the next transportation, transportation system plan update is to include an amendment to take a look at studying the possibility of implementing an elevated path, which would extend from where the West D Street path, um, is along the river to Island Park. So that would just be a study that wouldn't mean that the project would actually be implemented, but that would involve, um, public outreach, what would actually take, what would be the cost, um, as part of that piece? So if you have any questions?
Leonard. Um, Kristy, thanks. Um, do you, um, have any sort of, just general picture to give us of the, uh, of the cycle track if it were to be implemented? I mean, is this one of those curb tracks or is it a, uh, a, a, a bigger one than that?
A site, the cycle track would essentially be the concept that we looked at, um, during this process was to have it on the south side of the street. And so that would mean we remove parking along West D Street. There's parking on the north side, not on the south side, but we would need to remove all of the parking on West D Street. And then there would be a concrete divider, a traffic separator essentially that would divide the curb. Um, there would be the curb and then space for the bicyclist to go in eastbound and westbound. And then there would be that traffic separator.
Okay, so this is really more of a lane?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I was just trying to get a.
A separated lane essentially for both.
Thank you.
We're going to go to Mary Lee next.
Um, yes, uh, my first question is, could you, uh, describe for me what a speed cushion is?
Sure. It's basically, um, a speed bump.
Okay, now it does go the, across the entire street or is it along the side?
So it wouldn't, it would go along the street, the design of the actual speed cushion, that would be during the design process, um, you know, because we need to look at emergency vehicles and the bicyclists. So we need to make sure that we accommodate those folks as well and control the traffic speeds at the same time.
Yes, um, uh, that's, thank you. I, I wasn't, I couldn't picture in my mind without having your description. The other thing that I wanted to say was I appreciate the, um, deliberation you've put into this. I think the three steps sound good. I think it's important to have people who might be directly influenced or affected by whatever is done, they, to get their voice into the conversation. And so I like what you have set up as far as the three steps. Um, I think to me that sounds very logical, um, as far as what, what can, there's, I mean, there's going to be things we can't do. And so trying to get to a yes on things that we can do that are going to help. Um, I think I like the way you've set out the three steps.
Thank you.
Steve.
If, if the parking were removed, which I really, really am sort of against, would there be enough for the cycle track between the two curbs plus the two lanes?
Yes, if the, if the parking was removed, then we would be able to accommodate the cycle track plus one lane in each direction.
Okay. Joe.
Thank you. So I concur with Steve. I, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly that, that the, that there's a plan or there's motion to eliminate parking on both sides? Or is that something that is being considered or I just want to see how far along that's morphed?
No, at this time, as part of this project, we have only heard from folks directly affected and, you know, we've heard from different community members and whatnot. But that to remove parking is at, it's not out of the question as far as, you know, we've just started talking about it. And so to remove parking is not part of this walking and biking funding, this project that I would like to move forward with. Removal parking and looking at other options, that would have to be a future phase after coming back to council about our work programs and funding. Um, the one thing that I do want to mention though is, is that we will need to be talking about parking removal, um, very soon, and I will be coming back to council regarding, uh, parking removal because we finally received the notice to proceed for Mill Street. And we have a lot of competing interests on that street where right now we do not have any bike facilities. We don't have a bike lane, we don't have anything. And it is legally required for us to have on Mill Street. And with that, we also have to have new, new stormwater facilities. Um, you know, the bike facilities, we have a lot of different competing interests. We have poles, you know, in the setback area. So it is a topic that I'm going to need to come back to you folks soon is, uh, regarding parking removal to accommodate everything that we need.
Okay, so, um, back to the D Street is where, um, I, I oppose removing both parks, both sides of the parking. Um, I've heard about it from other folks and I think the neighborhood opposes it as well. Um, I don't, I, I, I'm okay with accommodating bicyclists, but frankly, I was quite offended in the last meeting we had when people spoke up and I heard someone say that the people that operate cars need to understand they're the guest. And I, that is absolutely incorrect and that we need to make sure that we do accommodate vehicles and, and bicyclists in a safe manner. But I don't want to see the pendulum going the other direction. We need to, we need to be able to find a middle ground. So as far as, um, removing things, I'm, you know, I get it. But we also see that does not mixed use lanes accommodate bicycles? Are you saying that those lanes are unlawful?
We, as part of this project, are putting in the sharrows where, you know, the vehicles and the bikes would need to share the lane.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's what we are moving, that's what I would like to move forward with as far as this piece. But that does not, that does not address the concerns that are out there in really needing to accommodate all types of folks that are using bicycles. You know, little kids, folks with the trailers with little kids in it, you know, elderly that might want to, you know, use, you know, a big tricycle and get through that. You know, the speeds are not, usually where you have sharrows is where the speeds are the same. And, um, you know, and also folks that are experienced cyclists, you know, knowing what's going on, uh, mixing, mixing those two together. So putting sharrows in on this project, um, this is just to basically accommodate folks that are experienced, feel comfortable, you know, traveling with the vehicles, but it does not address any of the other safety concerns that we have for all different types of mode, or sorry, all different types of, uh, cyclists.
So I support the, uh, speed cushions or speed bumps. That's not a problem that makes sense to me and, and of course I understand that especially with fire vehicles, the emergency vehicles are, are heavy and that they are concerned about going over those and potentially bottoming out. But, um, so otherwise, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with, with making this more biker friendly for sure. But, um, I don't want to sit there and negatively impact every single homeowner along there because we're doing multiple ways which people can, can travel. Um, but I think, I think inside there, within this project, there is a combination of things that you can do that, that, um, don't negatively impact folks as much as some that you have been discussing. So I want to be able to say that, that I'm going to support to feed people that, um, appear to be negatively impacted the greatest to make sure that, that their interests are also, uh, covered.
Corey.
Thank you. Uh, so I have a couple of things that I'm going to try to organize in a way that I end with the question part. So I, I think there's, there's no doubt that this is, you know, this is a heavily used, multi-used area, which is why it's taken us a while to get to it. Um, I actually appreciate the fact that we're trying to tackle it in phases because I think that things are evolving over time. And I think that we have an opportunity to take care of some of the big stuff. And one of the biggest things is that traffic calming because it really, I mean, honestly, people do speed along there and there's a lot going on. So I wonder if you could, we say traffic calming and we, we have the terminology, but I wonder if you could just say more for everyone to understand like what those steps are going to look like? And is there anything, I think there's an oper, I think there is. So that was, I shouldn't ask it as a question, but I think as a, as a city and just in the realm of what we have control over, I think there may be a way for us to maybe layer in some traffic safety, some things to, to go along with those changes to help to really slow the traffic down and to get a better understanding of how people are using it. But could you say more like, how many speed cushions and what the idea is if you know?
Yeah, so every, every location is a different, um, design. And you definitely want to have the speed cushions to be spaced close enough so that vehicles don't have enough time to accelerate too greatly. But you also don't want, you know, a roller coaster effect, up, down, up, down, up, down. So, um, you know, roughly every two hundred feet, but we really want to take a look at what we have out there. You know, are we going to be in a situation where it's right in the middle of a driveway? You know, there's driveways on both sides. So we need to really look at what's out there. Are we going to affect, you know, something that we've just haven't thought of? Uh, mailboxes and, you know, we need the mail carrier to be able to not be on a hub when they're delivering the mail. So, um, so right now the speed limit signs do say twenty-five miles per hour. The majority of traffic goes thirty-five miles per hour. So the signs are not helping a bit. And so what we really need to do is we need to design to force traffic to travel at a certain speed or less. And so that's really what our goal is. And we do have one location where it is an elevated crosswalk on the east end of the project, so we would do that. And then we would have speed cushions, um, you know, at the rest of the locations that aren't actual crossings at intersections. And then, um, you know, we, that, just putting, putting in all of this traffic calming does not mean that we can't do some other design with it. You know, so for instance, if we decided that, well, if council decided, not we, but if council decided, yes, we want to put in some bike lanes, we could still have the speed cushions, the, all the traffic calming with that. You know, we can incorporate a lot of different elements. So with us putting this in, this does not stop us from doing other designs.
So I have just a slight follow-up question. Is there any, any lighting or flashing lights or anything that are going to go with that, that crosswalk?
Uh, that was not a part of that funding package. That is something that can be looked at as part of that second step. You know, what else do we need, you know, taking a look at how, how did the, how does this project, um, how did it work? And then analyzing what can we do even more and then getting that funding to be able to implement more?
Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to jump here in here for a second, Steve. So did I hear that right, that it's posted at a, at a twenty-five miles an hour, but a majority of the traffic goes thirty-five or miles an hour?
Correct.
Okay, is that something that we can, and that we can, well, I see the chief out here. Uh, is that something that we can help address through traffic enforcement?
Yeah, I think it absolutely is. We have a reader board we can put out there that shows people speeds when they're going up and down the street. And we, you know, very often put, um, our traffic motors out in different parts of the city to address citizen complaints. So this is absolutely an area we can do, um, intermittent patrols in that area and run some speed, speeding missions.
Yeah, I think, and, and I think that would help, right? Because we, we've got a facility where the bikes are mixed with cars, right? Like at a, at a speed that is far too high to be safe. And anything that we can do to help drive the traffic speed down, I think that would be helpful.
Have taken that exact route to work when I rode my bike, so I'm very familiar with that stretch right there.
All right, thank you. Uh, Steve?
Uh, speed cushions is rather new term. And, uh, sometimes I describe it to people sort of like, like a raised crosswalk and, and maybe a different configuration, but that's what slows the traffic down. I think those are very important to put in there. And I, I'm not, we could put police out there, but boy, in the long run, I'm not too sure about that. I drive that every day and I'll tell you, I don't drive twenty-five, but I know I should and I will. So, uh, signage and, and, and lines and painting, you know, make things visible. And, 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 uh, the traffic calming. I like all that.
Leonard, and then we'll go to Joe.
And, uh, it sounds kind of restful, doesn't it? A speed, a speed cushion. Um, so, um, I, uh, what, what I wanted to ask, um, I know that in some of our zoning, we mandate parking spaces, um, X number of parking spaces per lot. Um, is there any kind of mandate in this neighborhood?
Not that I know of.
So in other words, if there's, if, if we were to eliminate the parking on either side of the street, then it could potentially, i- it could potentially not make any, any parking available in that, uh, on, on West D or.
Correct. We, we actually only have parking on the north side of the street. There, there is not parking on the south side as we speak.
Okay.
But that is correct. But that would mean that there would not be parking along that street if we moved forward in that direction later.
Got it.
Joe.
I think you, just on a, on a side note with the enforcement, that I would think that there's a possibility that, that there is some grant monies available for special enforcement. And I, I know the chief knows about that, but, but I'm talking about a, you know, a very focused enforcement on these, these couple of blocks areas to where that a hundred percent of that grant money would be used to pay overtime for the enforcement of traffic laws. And I would like to see that because you can use those grant monies and, um, stretch those out and, and people will start to think that gee whiz, there's a motor officer here, seems like all the time. And it's like, well, yeah, there is. So I think that would also go a long ways too.
All right, um, and I guess I have a couple more, uh, a couple more questions. Um, I like the phasing too, right? We've got to get to a point where we're at, we've talked about doing something on West D Street for, for a while, getting to the point that people actually see something out on West D and sort of mixing it with, you know, either enforcement or more signage or reader boards to try to slow down the traffic, I think is really important. Um, and then getting this, the additional study done. And I, and I don't, Kristy, do you have the time, maybe have an idea on the timing when we could, when we would at least put it, uh, program that?
For construction or to start design or, sorry?
Just to do, just to complete the study, right?
Oh, to complete the study.
Right, it sounds like you need another study to, to kind of look at the whole corridor.
Um, yes, so we would have to meet internally because it wouldn't just be the capital engineering folks. It would also, also be transportation planning and traffic engineering as well. And so we would need to look at all of the projects across the board that we have going on and, um, you know, prioritize this project, you know, against all of the others that we have going on. And then we would also need to acquire funding.
Okay, so that, so I think you're good going forward here and Steve.
One, okay. There's, there's a temporary measures that you proposing right now to do for a while, right? Temporary project?
No, we have, it would be the traffic calming plus the transition from the path to the project and then the connection on the, on the west end. That's not viewed as temporary.
So we have to do us another study for that?
No, no. So the second.
That's, that's what I've studied, 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 so.
No.
I, I, I'm, I want to, I want to get something moving and you've heard me say that. And, uh, oh, please go in that direction.
Yes, yes, yes. So just to clarify, the first step would be to start the design and then construct this traffic calming transition project. And then the second piece would for staff to come back with our, um, you know, with additional resources, staff and, um, financially to look at more options of what we can do to separate the bikes from other modes. And then the TSP amendment for that elevated path piece.
And I think everybody's nodding their head that they're, that they're good with that approach. Um, yeah, for, just from an outcome perspective, as when we get to that point, I'm not like, I'm not sure it's got to be an elevated path at, at the, at the end of the day, right? Like, I think when, when we tell you our goals and just understand that we've got a, there's lots of ways to get to them. But bicycle safety and slowing traffic down is, is the critical part here.
Yes, yes. I do want to clarify, um, earlier. So there are currently parking requirements and driveway requirements on site, but not on the street itself. So I just wanted to make sure that we're, I'm not mixing apples and oranges here. But that may change with, um, future state rulemaking.
All right, I'm looking around. Joe?
Actually, I'm glad you mentioned it, so I was thinking the very same thing when Leonard was men, talking about that is that we, we have, you know, we have minimum amount of parking per site that we have in the new code. And so, um, I don't think there's any, someone maybe can take a look or whatever, but I don't think there's any more developable lots along that stretch. Is that correct?
Not that I can think of. I would have to double check though.
So if someone went to add, if go with a duplex, then that's going to throw in some different parking requirements. And so I just want to look at, make sure that, that, I know that we can't say, okay, you can have one space per unit. And if you have any other cars, you will just have to park on the street. So if we, we have to keep that in mind, if we don't have a place for them to park, then it seems like the, um, the code or in the requirements of those code would be counterintuitive for those lots. But maybe something to look at up ahead of town. I'm just trying to foresee that, that, that may be an issue, maybe not.
All right, very good. Anybody else? Well, thank you, Kristy, so much for getting us up to speed on that project.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Um, we are going to adjourn for about half an hour and then we will come back at seven PM for the regular session. So we are adjourned. Stay on the same link, Joe, Mary Lee.
Got it, thanks.
I'm going to call the Springfield City Council regular session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts. Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
And let the record show that Counselor Pitts is excused for the evening. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United States of America.
To the republic.
To the republic for which it stands.
A nation.
Under.
Divisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourself on you until you are called to provide public testimony. There is one time designated for public testimony this evening under business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give it to the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet or a smartphone or computer and wish to speak for either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order when we get to post, um, business from the audience will be anybody wishing to speak in the city council chambers first, and then anybody, uh, who wishes to speak on Zoom next. And Neil, could you tell us how many people are joining us online this evening?
Mayor, currently we have 34 attendees and seven panelists and those present here in the room.
And it is good to see people in this room. Uh, first item, please.
Mayor, the first item is Springfield upbeat. Uh, we will be rescheduling item number one, which was the recognition of David Madden Eagle Scout Troop 751. And we'll let you know when we're able to reschedule that. Item two under Springfield upbeat is the children's bookmark contest winners 2021 through 2022. And Taylor Worley is here, um, along with Emily David for the staff report.
Hi folks, um, does my sound okay?
Yes, it is.
Okay, beautiful. Uh, so, um, first I want to recognize and thank, um, our library director, Emily David, who is helping me divide and conquer. We have families joining us to be recognized both virtually and in person this evening. So Emily is helping us out in person, um, in council chambers and, um, I'm taking care of the virtual aspect. So. Um, thanks for having us for this Springfield upbeat portion of the meeting. Um, so every year for 41 years, Springfield Public Library has held a bookmark contest. This year we received over 750 entries from all grade levels and from a wide variety of Springfield schools. As well as homeschool representatives. So we have the winning bookmarks have been professionally printed and they will be distributed in the library and through our various outreach programs all year long. On top of that, we invite you to pop out to the city hall art gallery where every single entry is currently on display. In addition to some enlarged, um, posters of the winning designs. So this year we encourage the artists use the 2022 summer reading theme, which is read beyond the beaten path. Um, as inspiration for their artwork, um, but bookmarks can always draw inspiration from books, readings, uh, reading in libraries in general. So I am going to share my screen and just take a couple minutes to brag on all of our wonderful artists. So you should be able to see 2021, 2022 bookmark contest. Did that work as I intended?
Yes, it did.
Thank you. All right. So, um, these are just our, our stats. And first we want to recognize Aria Wilson. So Aria is in kindergarten at Douglas Gardens. And we loved the gorgeous colors, the pastel rainbows and our reader right in the center there and all of the hearts. We enlarged her, her reader in the center there for you to appreciate. So. Aria, thank you so much for your beautiful artwork and congratulations. Next we have Luke Jordan, who is a first grader at Yolanda. We really loved the slogan that Luke came up with, take your path to reading as well as our readers', um, little companion and the bird, um, and just the wonderful details with the flowers. So thank you, Luke, for sharing your artwork with us and congratulations. Uh, for second grade, we are recognizing Lane Maddox of Walkerville, who created just the most amazing cobra who is reading. I'd like to think that he's reading the Who Would Win books, which is one of the most popular series of books in the library right now. Um, Lane, I, I love your cobra so much. Thank you. Congratulations. Olivia Enyers in third grade at Douglas Gardens. Olivia was very clever. Um, so Olivia took some of the artwork from the official summer reading program and incorporated that into their own design and then came up with their own slogan. So as long as you read, you will get better. And I can't think of anything better. Thank you, Olivia. Congratulations. And we have Braylee Brooks in fourth grade at Two Rivers, Dust Rios. Um. I will admit that I am usually not a pun person, pun person, but we really loved reading is magical. And we've been repeating it ever since we saw your bookmark design. So we have a unicorn cat with reading is magical. And I encourage you to say it out loud because it makes us all very happy. So Braylee, thank you so much. Congratulations. Fourth grade again, um, we have Isaac David Brooks, um, who kind of went with an out of this world reading theme with the cutest extraterrestrial I've ever seen. Um, really loved the little details in the book. And our, our triple eyed friend there. I think, thank you so much and congratulations. Going on to fifth grade, we have Samantha Ortiz. And Samantha Ortiz was reminding us all of like an Alice in Wonderland, get lost in reading. Um, but I just wanted to point out all of the amazing details that she hid in this bookmark. So, um, we can see all, there's even details all the way at the top of the waterfall, the mushroom hat, the mushrooms have little book caps. And then there was a sign there that says, uh, you know, do not leave the path, but clearly our reader is doing exactly what they want, which I appreciate. Thank you so much, so much Samantha and congratulations. Next we have Brooklyn Rose Slager, a seventh grader at Agnes Stewart. And Brooklyn, we were also impressed. You have clearly been practicing your perspective skills and it shows everything from the, um, the lantern coming from the ceiling to that, that single point perspective. We just really felt like we could get lost in your bookmark and the dragon is always an excellent, uh, detail. So thank you so much and congratulations. Next we have another seventh grader, Pablo Alamon. Um, Pablo created this beautiful soft pastel, read beyond the beaten path, um, artwork for us. And again, so many little details with that little like dragonflies or damsel flies, small vines growing out of the, the bricks and, um, the book. I appreciate how the book almost looks like the library logo, but instead of our, our leaf coming out of it, it's the, it's the slogan for the year. So very clever Pablo, good work and congratulations. Next we have Anime Walker. So Anime is, uh, staying true to her name and has this very, um, graphic style um, with her illustration. And anime, you're blending with your markers is just absolutely exceptional. Um, keep up the amazing work. Um, we just loved everything about this. It made us so happy to look at your artwork. So thank you and congratulations. Rebecca Pascal is an eighth grader at Thurston Middle School. Um, the composition here, we loved so much. That hair is amazing. I wish I had that hair. You were really clever with just how you fit everything in the bookmark and it looks so fluid and yet it's balanced. Excellent work. Thank you for sharing your artwork with us and congratulations. All right. Just have some high schoolers left. A McFido is eating, um, ninth grade at Thurston High. A, we laughed so hard when we saw your bookmark. It is beautiful and it is cheeky and we love it so much. So for anyone who's not familiar, A has put in one of the most famous picture books in the library, um, Don't Let the Pigeon Drive the Bus into, uh, their artwork here. And I just love having a Robin reading a book about the pigeon. And there's hardly any words, but it, it says. And there's hardly any words, but it it says plenty. So excellent work, A. Thank you so much. Maggie Britton, ninth grade at Springfield High School. Maggie has pulled from, I think, one of the most well-known pieces of poetry ever, which was of course, an excellent match for read, um, read beyond the beaten path. Two roads, a virgin of wood. And then again, Maggie, excellent color saturation and color choices. It's bright and beautiful. Thank you so much and congratulations. Amelia Hampton is an eleventh grader with Frontier Charter Academy. A really kind of mind bendy bookmark we have here. Love your composition, your lettering is superb and all the details are just really nice. So Amelia, thank you so much and congratulations. And then to finish out, we had a lot of winners this year. It was very hard to choose. We have Joel Elias Boran and Joel is an eleventh grader at Thurston High. And this is proof that even though black and white rarely works for this bookmark contest, that you can break the rules if you know what you're doing because Joel knows what they are doing. So Joel left some sketchy pencil lines and then went back over in ink. And even though it's sketchy, it's clear and just wonderfully representative of the piece from that happens when you you read out fine. And that is all of our bookmark winners. So I'm going to stop my screen share here. All right. Normally, if we were all together, I know we do a photo, um, for folks that are in the council chambers. I don't know if that's an option this year or not.
We're going to go ahead and have them up here in a second and and to get a and to get a picture taken because I see a lot of people who are pretty excited and they are absolutely gorgeous bookmarks this year. Before we do that, I'm going to let, you know, the council say great things about this project. I did share this one story. I was thankful that we saw these bookmarks today because I read a lot, but my five-year-old twins, every time they see my book, pull the bookmark out and hand it to me and say, I found your bookmark. And that doesn't seem like it helps my cause. So these will go into my pile of constantly recycled bookmarks to try to keep track of my page, but they look absolutely gorgeous and I'm, yeah, I'm I'm glad to see them. Did anybody else want to make comments before we we had the folks in the room up for a quick picture? Go ahead, Leonard.
Yeah, well, just off the charts creativity this year. Amazing stuff. And so is, I I liked Anime's take on Anime. That was amazing. And is is Brayley here? Bray- Brayley, I want to start a major sports franchise here just so that we can have a unicorn cat. Thanks. Congratulations to everybody. Your stuff all looks great.
Corey.
I think Mary Lee's been waiting even longer, but I'll go really quickly and then it could be Mary Lee. Not that I'm trying to tell you how to do your job because I'm not. I I love this time of year and we have, I also have and a sixteen-year-old granddaughter who loves to pull the bookmarks out and does not hand them to us, but eats them and chooses them and does things with them. So we are due for new bookmarks and I appreciate everyone participating in this. This is one of my just favorite pieces of the year and I mostly appreciate that you're all using the library and you're all reading all these fabulous books. So keep it up. Thank you.
Mary Lee, and then we'll go to Steve.
Okay, I have to show you, I wore my shirt in honor of library bookmark tonight. So anyway, I just want to say these bookmarks are absolutely fabulous. There wasn't a one among them that wasn't absolutely a work of art that should be framed. They're, they just, they did an absolute wonderful job this year. I'm impressed every year, but the group of the collective group this year is just outstanding. So congratulations to everybody. A lot of hard work, a lot of creativity, and I go along with the idea of I'm glad with Cory, I'm glad you're in there using the library because I used it all my life and I can't tell you how much, how much of a difference it makes. So keep, keep up the good work.
Steve. Artist creativity was my thing and through through high school and I thought it was pretty good, but you are far superior to anything I produce. So I thank you.
Joe.
Thank you, yes. That's one of the favorite things I I, one of the, one of my favorite things is being a counselor all these years. It's every single year that's like, that's a guaranteed high spot, guaranteed enjoyment spot, and this year didn't let me down. And I'm just really proud of our kids and the energy they put forward and that and their artistic skills and our imagination were just across the board. It was just amazing. So thank you, children. Appreciate it very much.
All right. If you were a bookmark winner, winner, meet me down here. We're going to do a picture.
We're going to follow instructions. So the mayor in the middle and then if.
All sides.
Hold on, you go right here and.
Hold out your bookmark.
Look out that way. And smile. It was absolutely great, guys. Congratulations.
All right. Thanks, Taylor. While we had you, there was something else that I that I think I wanted to bring up a little bit and maybe, maybe Emily can come talk a little bit about it, but I I heard you got a new committee assignment.
I I did, yes. I'm going to be very busy this year.
Well, I want to, do you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Uh, me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um.
I've got the note, I I've got the notes here, but I really wanted to hear what what made you excited about it.
Um, okay, so I, I, as a, as a youth services librarian, there's a couple of things that are on my bucket list of things that I'd like to be able to do before I, I retire, I guess. And and one of those things is serving on national book award committees. The biggest of which is the Newberry Award. So the Newberry Award is awarded by the American Library Association every year and it is given to a single book or or the author of a single most distinguished contribution to American literature written in English in a given year. So a lot of people know this as the little gold seal that you'll sometimes see on books in the library and on the bookstore. Um, and I was appointed to that committee to help determine the winner of the Newberry Award for twenty twenty-three. And that's pretty much all I can say about it. Um, everything happens behind closed doors. I can't talk about the books or decisions or anything like that, but I can share that I'm on the committee and anyone who was in the library with me, um, when I got the email as to the screaming and then the crying and then you're hyperventilating because I was very excited. And now I'm just, I'm clearing out an entire extra room in my house, um, to make room for all of the books that I will be receiving to review over the next year because it is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds.
It's that, it's that many books?
It's that many books. Um, I I will be able to, one thing I can share is is once this is all said and done, I'll have a page count, um, how many pages I read and I'll be able to share the page count, even if I can't tell you anything else.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to have Emily up here to talk about a little bit about how big of a professional accomplishment this is, but I can tell you, when I saw it online, I was really excited for you and really excited for this community because that's something special that we get to do. And oftentimes, I talk about so much about what makes us distinct and what makes Springfield special. And and when I saw this, it was really like, our library makes us pretty distinct and pretty special. And when, as I talked around the community in the last probably couple of days, the the common thing was this, we are so excited for Taylor. She's a great librarian and we're so lucky to have her. So I guess I wanted to say thank you so much for making Springfield this a special place to live. Emily, you want to jump in here and talk us, talk us through, how big a deal is this?
Well, it's a very big deal, as Taylor mentioned. You know, it's a national committee. Taylor, how many people are on the committee?
Um, there are, um, there's one chair, um, who's appointed and has to have served on the committee before. And then there are eight people who are elected. They run through a really competitive election and there are six people who are appointed and I was an appointed member. So essentially, there are fourteen committee members out of the whole country.
Yeah, that's for the entire country. So, you know, Taylor is one of the things that makes our library really special. And so anyone who goes into our children's area and gets to observe Taylor with the kids and with the parents, it's really just an incredible experience. She is so well-read. I mean, her knowledge of our collection is just really, really deep and kids come and they search for her and they look, seek her out and they say, Taylor, Taylor, I read that book that you said, I really, really liked it. It was so good. What should I read next? And Taylor gives them about three or four different ideas and the parents are the same way. They just all appreciate her so much and she, her knowledge and just her excitement is exuberant and it's, um, you know, contagious so that the parents and the kids get excited too. So we are just so very lucky to have her and it's just such an honor for us as our library to have her be a part of this. So thank you very much, Taylor, and I know you're going to be really extra busy this next year.
Thank you all. And yes, I will be very busy.
It must be rough, getting to read all the best books in the entire country.
It's it's the sheer volume that is a little intimidating.
Wow. Thanks so much for joining us this evening.
Yeah, thank you. And artists, I'm going to try to run over and see you all here in just a minute.
All right. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is the consent calendar.
I make, I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar. I can't get it to come up here.
Second. Yet, motion's completed.
We're waving, not voting, by the way, just to make sure it's entirely entirely clear because they're clearing out to go look at the library. All right, it's been moved in second and by Counselor Mo and Counselor Pictionary. Neil, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts. Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Here, uh, yes.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Hi.
All right, the motion passes five to zero with one, with one absent and we still have managed to let Counselor Rodley not vote on her voting machine.
Uh, Mayor, the next item is business from the audience.
I don't not think we have any cards in the room. So if you're interested in speaking to the council, if you can raise your hand, please.
Mayor, we have the first speaker.
Okay, and we have lost all. We're going to pause for station identification. All right, so are we going to have to physically time it?
Do you mind?
We'll make, we'll make it work. Bring people, let's start bringing people up.
Okay, our first speaker is James Hugo. We have no one else in the queue at this point.
All right, James, I can't see you up on the, on the screen yet, so can you hear us? Okay?
James, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Um, so you all got my letter, correct, or my email?
Uh, James, could you, could you just start with your name and your ward and location? And then we'll go.
Okay, sorry. Um, my name's James Hugo. I'm in Ward Five and I'm out here in Thurston off of Fifty Second Street.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Um, so yeah, I sent an email yesterday. Um, I I don't, I'm not, I don't want to take much too much time because we're limited. Basically, I'm just here trying to open up the dialogue with the local government here. Maybe we can have a work session and talk about this, these topics here in the future. The end game that I'm trying to accomplish is to get the city of Springfield to create their own environmental policy within the city limits to help regulate the business, the big heavy industry we have here in Springfield. International Paper is the big, the big target because they're the biggest polluter in in the area. Um, I, I just would like to start that discussion, maybe create a, help create a committee, like all the other committees that exist in town, maybe have one focusing on environmental policy and, um, just getting people aware, educating people in the community about the concerns that are, what are real. I I sent some links. I'm not sure if anybody was able to get, they're actually to access them. I'll attempt to, it didn't work. I'll attempt to send some more links tomorrow to to everybody, but, um, so yeah, that's basically what I'm requesting the city council to do is to further this discussion and appreciate your time. Thank you for listening to me and it's pretty much what I got to say.
Thank you, James.
Mayor, the next speaker is Kevin Shaper and we have no one else in the queue at this point. Kevin, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name's Kevin Shaper and I live at Ward Two. Uh, I want to support what James said.
Kevin, you may. Yes.
Hi, my name's Kevin Shaper and I live in Ward Two. I I want to support what James said. If you on the council believe in climate change, why, why aren't we doing anything about it? Why is there no city policy and why, why do we have to be forced by the governor? Anyway, that's not my, the intent of my, of my comment. What I want to say is that I am affected by West D. When a driver passed me on my bike with inches to spare at thirty miles per hour while carrying my three-year-old, I was affected. When I rode my bike behind my wife, who was carrying her then four-year-old, and I heard the roar of an F-150 pass a foot from my handlebars and speed towards my wife and daughter, and I did not know if they would be hit, I was affected. I understand that it's easy for you to imagine the frustration of having to park a few blocks from your destination, but I'd like you to try to imagine not knowing if your family is going to survive the next three seconds as a five-thousand-pound truck is passing within inches of them and whether you might feel that you've been affected. Thank you.
Mayor, those appear to be all the hands, hands we have up for business from the audience.
Okay, then I think we're ready for next item. Is there any council response? Do we have an ETA on getting the rest of the participants on? Oh, Leonard, go ahead. I can't see Mary Lee or Joe.
I, I just wanted to thank James and Kevin for their testimony tonight and I'm, I'm sure that we're going to do our due diligence on finding out whether it's even possible for a city in Oregon to establish a climate policy. I, I don't know if it's within our purview or not, but if it is, then it's something we can consider. Thanks.
I'm sort of, when I talk about it and talking about the, the greenhouse effect and that is, it's coming, I'm pretty sure in the future, we're going to take, we're working on it now slowly, 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 but it's going to be very, very serious as we go along. So I'm pretty sure that hopefully we'll be able to satisfy those that are really concerned.
Anybody else? And I guess the, and you know, I've talked to Mr. Hugo a couple of times. I would just continue to encourage him to reach out to El Rapa, who covers the air quality issues, um, you know, or he can reach out to Counselor Pictionary, who's on their board because we do not, the, the city of Springfield doesn't monitor the air quality in, in the city. It's El Rapa that's their quality authority. Joe. Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Yes, it, it's, the, the city has delegated that, uh, authority over, straight over to Arapa. And Arapa has got the regulatory authority throughout the region, entire county. And that the, the Arapa issues permits. And that Arapa also requires and does check and cross-check and confirms. That the permittees are staying within the guidelines. The, um, the other side of this is that. The DEQ is a state agency that does all the regulatory work when it comes to water, soil and waste. So, um. I'm happy with, with what's been happening in Arapa. I'm very happy with the results and I'm very happy with the numbers. That we have been seeing in this county, in this region. We've got some of the cleanest air in the United States. So. Again, they're doing a great job and they've taken a lot of work off of the city's plate. Because frankly, we would have to pay employees to do that amount of work. And it would, it would cost us a lot more to have our own staff doing that type of work than it is for just the nominal. Fees that we pay Arapa and it's a partnership with the City of Eugene, Cottage Grove, Crestwood, I mean Cottage Grove, this. Lane County, Oak Ridge, they're all in partnership, which, which creates a, a ton of savings for really good work for a bunch of professionals.
All right, next item, please.
Mayor, any other business from the city council?
Any other business? All right, let's keep going then.
Any business from the city manager?
Uh, one item, please. Um, just a quick reminder, uh, Mayor and Council. That the Springfield Police Department will be hosting two community events, um, for community members to learn about. Their upcoming small unmanned aircraft system program. People can go and see a live demonstration of, uh, these crafts, otherwise known as drones. Uh, the events will be on February tenth at five PM and also February twelfth at five PM. Both of which, um, will be at the Justice Center. Uh, there will be an opportunity to, uh, talk to the drone operators, ask questions. Um, really dive into how this program will be used and, and also just, um, there's a, this is a heavily regulated. Program by, by the state of Oregon. So I just wanted to acknowledge Chief Shear and his team. For being responsive to some of the questions that this council and community had about this potential program. And by putting this together so people could go and, uh, for themselves, ask questions and experiences. Thank you.
Next item.
Next item, any business from the city attorney?
Uh, no business tonight. Thank you.
All right, that looks like it for the evening. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.